I would like to call to order the June 19, 2017 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome. It's good to have all of you with us tonight. We are very happy to start our meeting out with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. If you'll please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're very pleased to have Reverend Scott Davis from Pitts Baptist Church with us tonight for our invocation.
Thank you for the invitation to be here. I will be unable to stay for the meeting. Tonight is our opening night of Vacation Bible School, so I'll be headed back to that. But let's pray together. Father, we come before you tonight in the name of Christ, and we thank you for the work that you have called us to do. We thank you for these council members and the stewardship that you have entrusted to them in governing. Lord, I pray tonight that you would give to them clear minds, grant them wisdom from above in all of their deliberations and decisions. We pray that everything would be done in the right and in the proper way. Lord, we know that ultimately we are accountable to you for all that we do. And so help us all to walk wisely in every area of our lives. Lord, we thank you for our community and all the good things that we have. The Bible says that every good gift comes ultimately from your hands. God, thank you for your provision. Help us in turn to be a blessing to others. Lord, in addition to wisdom for these council members, we also ask for safety for those who work every day on the streets to protect us and to serve us. We pray also for the individuals and families of this community, that they would seek you. We pray that families would be healthy and strong, so that communities in turn can be healthy and strong. And Lord, as a pastor, I pray for our churches, that we would faithfully preach your word and be about your business. And now again, Father, I ask your blessings and your guidance on what transpires in this place tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us tonight, and we certainly understand, or at least I do, that you won't be staying with us. The opening night of Vacation Bible School was one of the biggest days of the year in my childhood. I think we had a parade and everything, so.
Absolutely.
We certainly understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I would ask that we observe a moment of silence in memory of Mayor Kathy Kitz. I wanted to talk a little bit about Kathy, but I'm having difficulty maintaining my composure. All of us knew Kathy, and she was one of the bravest women that I've ever met. She has battled illness over a long period of time and has continued to serve this county and her community as mayor of Midland, and she passed away on Saturday. I think her services will be Wednesday at 11:00 at Midland Methodist.
Bethel United Methodist.
Bethel United Methodist Church. Yes, so please, let's remember Kathy for just a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Kathy visited us here many times and stepped up to the microphone and spoke, and she certainly will be missed. First item on our agenda is the approval or correction of the minutes that you all have before you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes as presented?
I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and next we move to the approval of the agenda, which is also before you, including the changes on page 371. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to recognitions and presentations. And first, we have Active Living in Parks, Park and Recreation Month proclamation. And Londa, did you have anything to say on that one? And I will read that proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation and senior center programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Cabarrus County, and whereas our parks, recreation, and senior centers are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region; and whereas parks, recreation, and senior center programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens; and whereas parks, recreation, and senior center programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas parks, recreation, and senior center areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetive buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Cabarrus County recognizes the benefits derived from parks, recreation resources, and senior centers, now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim July 2017 as Park and Recreation Month. Do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And next, I would like to recognize Alan Thompson for the presentation of the Mission Lifeline Gold Award.
It is my honor to be here tonight to announce that Cabarrus County EMS system has received the 2016 Mission, excuse me, 2017 Mission Lifeline Gold Award, again, from the American Heart Association. We have previously received this gold award in 2016, 2015, and then also a silver award in 2014. What this award recognizes is the performance of the system designed to take care of patients who are having heart attacks. It's not an award that we're capable of receiving by ourself. It represents a strong partnership between our volunteer and paid fire departments in the community, our 911 dispatchers, and our hospital, and our medical director. The measures that are recognized in this award are time-sensitive and volume-sensitive, so it's the number of patients that we take care of, the type of care we provide, and then what the timeliness of that care is. The American Heart Association and the American College of Cardiology have set these standards. And to receive the gold award, you must have at least two years' worth of data, meeting 75% of the performance measures. And in this case, we met 100% of the performance measures, and we have done that now for three years. So it's my honor to be here tonight to announce this award to you, because it represents the type of care that Cabarrus County EMS, the Cabarrus County First Responders, and these healthcare systems in Cabarrus County are delivering to the citizens of this county each day. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. It does not go without notice that we hear frequently about awards and commendations that our EMS folks receive, and we truly appreciate the work that you do on behalf of all the citizens of Cabarrus County. Makes us feel safer every day, so thank you. Next, we move to informal public comments. We have, I think, three cards tonight. I will point out that our comments are limited to three minutes, and there is a timer there that can help you keep up with that. And first, we have Thomas Hill, and we would ask you to come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Thomas Hill. I reside at 10896 Pioneer Mill Road. I'll redo quick, and find this on the internet at CedarvaleJustice.com. For the benefit of my neighbors and fellow county residents, please allow me to present you a Cliff Notes version of my family's story, a story of an elderly U.S. Navy Korean War veteran and his disabled wife, my elderly parents. M.D. and Shirley Hill signed a deed of sewer eneasement in May 2004. This would allow the development of Cedarvale Farms subdivision. Without such an agreement, the subdivision would have never seen the light of day. In exchange for the privilege of having the sewer line constructed across their land, the developer would construct a grand tour sewer line, which would extend approximately 1,500 linear feet along the creek crossing the Hill's property with seven laterals. This would enable the Hills to develop their property as they saw fit. The deadline for commencing the grand tour sewer line was August 30 of 2007. The developer missed the deadline. Being good and reasonable neighbors, the Hills granted not one, but two deadline extensions. The Hills bent over backwards to help make this development possible. On July 9, 2009, we had a law firm send a demand letter to Valley-Pioneer Mill LLC. You can review the document at CedarvaleJustice.com. A family member paid $1,212.04 to have this legal letter sent to my family's oppressors, only to have it completely ignored. Our family cannot afford to spend any more money on lawyers. My father is a U.S. Navy Korean War veteran. He operated an electrical construction company for 31 years, employing hundreds of people through those years. Has not my father paid his dues. I guess justice only comes to those with deep pockets and political connections. Almost 13 years have passed since the ink dried on the contract, and the Hills have nothing to show for their sacrifice. Cedarvale Farms is booming, new homes are springing forth like weeds, and developers are making money hands over fist. Meanwhile, my parents suffer. I realize that none of you did this, and I don't know what's in your power legally to help me, but I'm asking you as community members, this is a U.S. veteran that served this country, defended this country, and an out-of-state developer comes in here and shafts him, hoodwinks him into signing the contract. This cannot stand, and I'm a peaceful person. I'm not violent, but I will live to see justice if there's any. If God willing, my parents are going to get paid somehow or the other. So I'm asking everybody in the community, my friends, neighbors, particularly veterans, we need to stand together. And I don't know what else to say other than, this is my life mission to help my parents. My mother cannot be here tonight because she's in a wheelchair, and I didn't want to put her through this. But I want to introduce, I don't care what about my time. This is Mr. M.D. Hill. Would you please stand? He's a U.S. Navy veteran from the Korean War. Dad, I promise you, I'll do the best I can for you and the family. And I know my time's up, but this is just beginning. God bless every step you take. It's nothing personal, but it's the nature of government. We're good at collecting taxes, but we could do a better job defending the rights, the life, liberty, and property of our community. And I think that my parents' situation proves me right. God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Next, we have Margaret Houston.
I came here tonight to thank you, Steve Morris and Commissioners, to express my thanks for the Monday Mobile Midland Library Service. Now, that's a tongue twister, I'm sure. But with me today, we have a few of our friends, if they would rise for me. A few of the friends of the Midland Library, we have a few of them. We have 54 members today. And with me is the Vice President, Beth Talan, and myself, the President, Margaret Houston. The Mobile Monday Library Service has been absolutely fantastic. Emory has been great to work with, and the library staffs have been exceptional. Their customer service is really good when helping the citizens, and they represent you and the county well. The service is currently twice a month for three hours in Midland, and we have been pleased in the participation, especially given by the limited time that we have. So we look forward to continue working with Emory and the library staff to serve Midland citizens, and want to thank you for your support as we continue on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you taking the time to come. Next, we have Vincent, and I hope I pronounce this correctly, Vesa.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate being here tonight. My name is Vincent Vesa. I'm a resident of Mount Pleasant. I'm the newly-elected Democratic precinct chair. We do have a few Democrats out there, believe it or not. And I want to acknowledge the fine work that was done by local officials in Mount Pleasant, a bipartisan effort to put together a Mount Pleasant comprehensive plan. You may or may not be aware of it, and I'm sure that you probably are, but I wanted to make sure that it was here for the record. According to the publicly available background report, the plan is, quote, "designed to help prioritize methods to fulfill the vision," unquote. It addresses things like population growth, demographics, history, housing, economics, employment opportunities, income, commuting, environment, and so forth. On May 22 last month, the Mount Pleasant Township Precinct Democratic Precinct Meeting pulled together a citizens' outreach to get feedback on the plan and to be able to provide that feedback to local officials. We also surfaced some issues that were county, state, and national issues. We'd like to share our findings with appropriate elected officials at the right time, and so I wanted to make sure that that's on the record, that we do have that information available here at the county level and certainly back in Mount Pleasant. And we plan to solicit more input at what we're going to call a hobo supper. Some of you might be familiar with that, but we're going to host one of those in August. Because this plan is so vital, it's the very first step in identifying the needs that we have in our community. The next step is to put some meat on the bones and say, well, what are we going to do? How are we going to prioritize those needs? So we're working hard on doing that. We're going to reach across the aisle to our neighbors who are Republicans, because in our small little town, we really don't wear those party hats. We do try to, you know, work together and do the best thing for our community. So I appreciate this opportunity to be here in front of you and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. That is all the yellow cards that I have. If there's anybody else that would like to make public comments at this time, I would encourage you to step to the podium. Seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. You all have a copy of that before you, which are items that we discussed at our work session earlier this month. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to new business. First up is the adoption of the fiscal year 18 Cabarrus County budget. We do require a public hearing, so at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 18 Cabarrus County budget. Would encourage anybody that would like to speak on the budget to come to the podium at this time. Okay, well, I'll make a few comments before we close the public hearing. It's a lot of work. This is a big book with a lot of information in it, and certainly, to make my comments in the public hearing, would like to extend appreciation to staff for the hard work that they've put in to formulating this budget. Also, I think that our process has been as open and transparent as possible. We've had two public meetings, workshops to discuss the budget, and of course, these are things that we've talked about over many, many months, different pieces at different times, both at our work sessions as well as at our regular meeting here. And this budget that we will be voting on tonight represents a tremendous amount of work by staff to try to put all the pieces together and to present this budget, which does not include a tax increase this year. So seeing no one to speak, I'll close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion in regards to the fiscal year 18 budget. The county manager, do you have any comments you'd like to make prior to that?
No, sir. We're excited that you're about to vote on it.
Okay, okay. Well, you get two months off from budget work, I think, about after this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the 2018 budget.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the budget as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and thank you to all of you that have worked so hard to put that together, especially the two ladies I see sitting back in the audience tonight. We truly appreciate the work that you've done on it. Next up is update of Capitol.
Morris, if I may interject, there's another motion.
Another motion.
On that item.
Okay.
The fire districts.
The fire districts, and that is not on my sheet here.
165.
Okay, bear with us just one moment here.
How about if I help and make a motion to adopt the Cabarrus County budget ordinance for the fire district tax fund for fiscal year 18?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Okay, now we move to number two. Update of capital projects, fund budgets, and related project ordinances. And Susan Fearington is here to talk with us about that.
Before you, you have the updates for the multi-year fund budgets and project ordinances for seven different funds. The multi-year funds are approved and updated through a project ordinance, unlike the annual appropriation you just made, and proof that's coming near. Each time we have an increase to the budget for a multi-year fund, we have to come back before the board and increase the budget and also do a project ordinance update. So tonight, we want to do updates for the Construction and Renovation Fund, the School Construction Fund, the Community Development Block Grant Fund, the Sheriff's Department Fund, the Small Projects Fund, the Department of Aging Fund, and finally, the Cannon Memorial Library Fund for your approval.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Fearington? Okay, do I hear a motion in regards to the update of capital project fund budgets and related project ordinances?
Move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next, item number three, fiscal year 18 Economic Development Allocation. This does require a public hearing. County manager, did you have anything you wanted to add before I open the public hearing?
No, this is required by statute, that you do hold the public hearing in reference to the activity that you've done throughout the year, in reference to economic development, and then your funding of the program as well.
Okay, and the actual funding is already approved in the budget, correct? Okay, so all we need is a public hearing. So at this time, I would open the public hearing for the discussion of our Economic Development Allocation for fiscal year 18, and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this.
Mr. Chairman, this is, again, concerning the allocation for the Economic Development Corporation, $400,000, and that goes to their operating funds, along with all of the cities in the county, as well as several private companies help fund this corporation.
Right. Okay, seeing no one speaking in the public hearing, I'll close it, the public hearing at this time, and I don't think any additional motion is required on that. Next item is item four, purchase of overflow parking lot property at Concord Senior Center, and Jonathan Marshall will talk with us.
This is an item we presented a number of times concerning a lease or purchase of the overflow parking lot. I'm glad that Susan Donaldson is still here, because if you actually want to ask, do they use it, which I'm sure you know, because you've probably parked in the overflow lot there, they use it every day. So what we're proposing is that we purchase this overflow parking lot from the private owner for $64,000, which is an appraisal that they presented back in December of 2015, and they've been willing to honor that price. And then there's a budget amendment that goes with that, should you choose to do it.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Marshall? We've talked about this a number of times over the past several years in different contexts, and I think it will be a valuable addition to our senior center. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the Concord Senior Center overflow parking lot property for the amount of $64,000, including the required budget amendment, and to authorize the county manager to execute the transfer documents, subject to review and revision by the county attorney, including authorization for the finance director to create the related budget amendments and project ordinances as necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to number five, proposed T-Mobile lease at Conaples Middle School, and Jonathan will talk about that.
Again, this is an item we discussed at your work session. Will Crabtree help present it? I did tell Will, we discussed it at the meeting, he did not need to be present this evening. And this is a co-location of a telecommunications service on one of the light standards at Conaples Middle School, and they had asked that to be given, we're asking for direction, both the county as the property owner to be interested in approving a lease, as well as that lease benefiting the Conaples Middle School. So this is essentially giving us the right to sign some zoning documents that go before the Conaples Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as giving us direction on how to set that lease up. The lease itself, they proposed 25 years for the total term of the lease. They contacted Mr. Cook about the details of that. It will need to come back before you after advertisement for a resolution approving the lease, so you will see this again.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Marshall? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve negotiations for a telecommunications site lease at the current Conaples Middle School.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, we have from Planning and Development, Home Plans and Programs, and we're glad to have Kelly Sifford to talk with us about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. As we discussed at your agenda session meeting, with the home program, there are strings attached to the funding. They come in the form of fair housing policies, section 504, a lot of the things we do anyway. But they have to be codified, and we have to actually have plans. So, these plans will get us into compliance with any regulations with home moving forward. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Sifford?
Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the home plans and programs as proposed?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And we did talk about this in greater detail at our work session. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to number seven, 2017 and 2018 limited obligation bonds project ordinance updates. And we're glad to have Ms. Fearington back with us to talk about that.
And each month, it seems like I come to you and talk more and more about the debt that's upcoming this fall. So, as another step getting towards that fall issuance, we have to pre-audite some of our contracts with our underwriters, and with our attorneys, and different bond closing costs before the bonds are actually issued. So, before you, as I submitted a budget amendment for you to approve, so we can go ahead and pre-audite some of those contracts, no one felt well that we'll reimburse ourselves when we get the proceeds in the file. But just for it to be legal, we need to pre-audite those contracts. So, the budget amendment is also included in your agenda packet and two project ordinance updates to allow us to--in the future, there's a section added to our project ordinances, section 2B12. And it just states that we can allow the proceeds to be used ahead of time, and then reimburse ourselves. Just makes it more--it actually states it in the project ordinance where it didn't do that before. So, I'm bringing before you the project orders for the 2017, and knowing that, again, we're going to turn around in 2018 and hopefully issue debt again for the rural Cabarrus Community College Advanced Technology Center and an elementary school. So, both those project ordinances are included for updates. Questions?
Okay, questions for Ms. Fearington? This, again, is one we've talked about pretty extensively a couple of times before. Hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion to adopt the LOBS 2017 budget amendment and updates to the LOBS 2017 and LOBS 2018 project ordinances.
Move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Next, we move to number nine-- no, excuse me, number eight, EMS response delays associated with road closures. Alan Thompson's going to talk with us about that.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm here tonight to present a proposal, a memorandum of understanding agreement, that we suggest entering into or requesting your permission tonight to authorize the county manager to finalize the details of this agreement and to have it executed after review of the county attorney. As a result of the I-85 construction over the last couple of years, we have been doing our best to stay abreast of the closures, the response delays, and the impact to our citizens on public safety response. And up to this point, we've been doing a real good job of making sure that response times have not been impacted. They have now reached a phase with their construction that will result in several simultaneous road closures that will impact our emergency medical services response time to the northeastern part of Cabarrus County, to the northeast side of Interstate 85. Thanks to the communications that we have established with North Carolina Department of Transportation, and multiple meetings that we've had, some conversations we've had with our county attorney, our deputy county manager, and county manager, we have been able to work out a tentative solution that would provide temporary funding for personnel to be placed at the hospital on Lane Street, which would provide service to the area that's going to be impacted by the closures. We're bringing this before you tonight without a contractor's name. We're bringing it before you tonight to authorize the county manager to move forward with it, because once this process is approved, and we have received a good deal of support from the Department of Transportation on it, but once they make a decision, the road closures will take place in two weeks or less. So, we have to have this before you for your consideration, so that, once this happens, we have the ability to relocate those resources, fund those resources in the amount of $19,164.24 per month. And what that will do is provide 24-hour coverage operating out of the Lane Street Hospital, or a location close to there, to provide services to that area of the county. I'll be happy to entertain any questions or provide additional information that you may need.
Questions for Mr. Thompson?
Just, Alan, who-- the state will be paying the county to provide this coverage. Who will actually be performing the work?
The work will be performed by our EMS providers. So, we will--are likely going to staff that with our--with a combination of our part-time staff, full-time staff, moving resources around. But it provides funding so that we can use our part-time and our overtime staff to cover that. And the funds will be provided-- the Department of Transportation is overseeing the contract. The contractor that they name will actually be paying, writing the check to the county. And it will be for likely a 12-month period.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, for the purposes of the board and the public, too, it will be the same people that run our trucks daily now. They'll just be working additional hours or additional-- we are not contracting with an outside agent to do this. It is--this is-- so you will be receiving the same coverage that you typically enjoy right now, so.
And the nice part about this also is, as county manager said, it's the same type of coverage. We're using this to address response times. But the other piece, by doing these simultaneous road closures, it does speed this project up, and that's the reason that they have made notification to us this would happen. They have been very willing to listen to our concerns and are willing to address those concerns. So, that's where we are.
I don't have any questions, but just thanks for the proactive approach, and to keep our citizens safe and timely in response. And also, thank you for the--
Thank you, ma'am.
Vision.
Alan, does the dollar amount represent the cost that we gave them, and they're covering it? Or is it what they propose? And if that's the case, does it cover our cost?
This will cover our cost, sir. This is in addition. We're currently not providing that truck to that area. We typically cover that area with our units out of Conapolis, downtown Conapolis, and then out of our main office location. But with the I-85 construction, simultaneous road closures of Center Grove and Brantley Road, and then some other side streets there, it's presenting significant response delays or will, once those closures take place. So, what we presented to them was that they would pay for staffing for us to place a unit in that area for the duration of the simultaneous road closures of Center Grove Road and Brantley Road.
Okay. Sounds like that was our cost.
Yes, sir.
Well, I would like to echo Commissioner Honeycutt in the appreciation of being proactive. Having a solution on a problem that hasn't presented itself yet is the way to go. So, it's now here. You guys are ahead of the curve, and I just commend you for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Would it be safe to say that the response times to those folks in that area may even be shortened?
It would be safe to say that those response times would be shorter. Our response times currently are at a level that it's really hard to top. Yes, they are growing because of traffic, and with the road closures, they're becoming more challenging. But our hope is to at least maintain those response times, if not improve those response times.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to authorize the county manager to finalize the details of the agreement and execute the final agreement, subject to review and revision by the county attorney, to enter into the agreement with the contractor for the I-85 project, which we understand has not been named yet.
The contractor has been named, but not the contractor that will be responsible for this payment.
Right, okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you.
Sir.
Okay, next, we move to item number nine, which is disposition of school property. And we're happy to have Jonathan to talk with us about that.
This is actually an item that was added to your agenda at the request of the schools. They have been looking at the Long School where they currently operate Head Start, and as you're aware, there'll be a new contractor operating the Head Start facility from that location. So, they've actually had an offer to purchase the Long School property and buildings. Some--the modular buildings are actually were purchased by Head Start, so that's an asset that will transfer with the contract, as I understand it. But they had-- you have a letter in your packet from the chair of the Board of Education indicating that they wish to sell that property, but by law, you have a right of first refusal, so you have the option to purchase that from the schools. I would tell you that the county has no need for that property, so we would not recommend its purchase, but that's up to the board. And I'll apologize for the wording of the requested action. It's difficult to set a motion to do some--not do something. But this is your option, if you choose, to negotiate for the purchase of that property. If Mr. Cook wants to add something, he seems to be leaning forward.
I'm satisfied with the language. Mr. Marshall?
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions for Jonathan? We have talked about this a bit before, and so if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion at this time to respond to the Cabarrus County Board of Education that the county does not wish to obtain the Long School property.
Move for approval, no.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. We will now move on to appointments to boards and committees. First up is Active Living and Parks Commission. It is requested to remove Kevin Bryant from the Active Living and Parks Commission roster due to his resignation from a term that expires January 31, 2018. And I'm gonna make-- we have a very long list of appointments tonight, so I'm going to make these in a form of a motion. And please feel free to not second that motion, or have any discussion if you would like. So, at this time, I would make a motion to remove Kevin Bryant from the Active Living Parks Commission, and thank him for his service.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we did have a list of applications for that position, and at this time, I would make a motion to appoint Charles Grimsley to the Active Living and Parks Commission as the Concord Planning Area Representatives to complete an unexpired term ending January 31, 2018. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in-- any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Excuse me, may I interject?
Uh-huh.
On page 277, next to his name, it says Conapolis, and this has to be a Concord representative.
I believe his address-- I checked that, I think--
I'm just looking right here. It says Conapolis.
Yeah, I think it was in that Concord area, Afton Village area, if I'm not mistaken, which there are some-- city of Concord addresses. Mr. Marshall might enlighten us on that. I know--
I'm just going by what's in front of me.
There we have some overlapping--
They are. We added the planning areas to these, so if we have Conapolis next to that, I would at least, before you made that final approval, I would like to double-check that, because I think we had changed that so you would know what district they live with.
Right, okay. In light of that information, then I would suggest that we table this until our meeting next month.
And if there's not an address, like the one there's not, what does that mean? That says he resides in Mecklenburg County. Okay. I don't know Matthew Smith. Matthew Smith is here as being a Concord-- in the Concord area, so he could be appointed to that position. I don't know Matthew Smith. I'm just looking at what's in our agenda, so if we wanted to appoint somebody tonight, we could appoint Matthew Smith.
My motion would be that we table this action until our July meeting.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this appointment to July. Any discussion?
One more.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. So, we'll be talking about that again next month. Next, we have appointments to the Board of Equalization and Review. Keith Troutman and Helen McGinnis currently serve on the Board of Equalization and Review and have terms ending June 30, 2017. Both have indicated they are willing to serve another term. Mr. Troutman has served on this board since 2011. An exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy will be needed for him. So, at this time, I would make a motion to reappoint Helen McGinnis and Keith Troutman to the Board of Equalization and Review for three-year terms ending June 30, 2020, including an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy for Mr. Troutman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to the Cabarrus County Tourism Authority. The Cabarrus County Tourism Authority Board of Directors has four seats that need to be appointed for the term commencing July 1, 2017, and expiring on June 30, 2020. The nominating group and their nominees are as follows. Cabarrus County, seat number one, Pamela Dubois. Cabarrus County Regional Chamber of Commerce, seat number three, Patricia Horton. Cabarrus County Tourism Authority, seat number two, Tim Hagler. Cabarrus County Tourism Authority, seat number 10, Emily Zimmerman. Ms. Zimmerman is a Mecklenburg County resident, and an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy will be needed for her. An additional motion requested is, in addition, in order to align with the current Cabarrus County Tourism Authority legislation and bylaws, the CVB Board of Directors requests the transfer of Angie Brown from seat number five to seat number 11, and the transfer of Jennifer Parsley from seat number 11 to seat number five. Their term expirations would remain at June 30, 2018. So, at this time, I would make a motion to appoint Patricia Horton, seat number three, and Emily Zimmerman, seat number 10, to the Cabarrus County Tourism Authority for three-year terms ending June 30, 2020, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy for Ms. Zimmerman.
Did you make a motion?
I did.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would further make a motion to reappoint Pamela Dubois, seat number one, and Tim Hagler, seat number two, to the Cabarrus County Tourism Authority for three-year terms ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. A third motion. I would make a motion to transfer Angie Brown to seat number 11, and to transfer Jennifer Parsley to seat number five, with their terms to remain expiring on June 30, 2018.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to Centralina Workforce Development Board. The terms of appointment for Dr. Carol Spalding, Education Representative, and Christopher Cody, Organized Labor Representative, on the Centralina Workforce Development Board ends June 30th, 2017. Dr. Spalding is willing to serve another term, and a recommendation letter is attached in that regard. Dr. Spalding resides in Rowan County. An exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy will be needed for her. And so at this time, I would make a motion to remove Christopher Cody from the Centralina Workforce Development Board roster and thank him for his many years of service. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. I would further make a motion to reappoint Dr. Carol Spalding to the Centralina Workforce Development Board as an Education Representative for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2019, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. On the other position that has been vacated by Mr. Cody, this has to be an Organized Labor Representative for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2019, and the appointments, or the names that we have, I do not know if they are qualified to fit that position. So I would move that we table that appointment to our July meeting in order to get more information. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, we have appointments to the Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board. Kenny Long and Grayden Choinski serve on the Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board and have terms expiring July 1st, 2017. Both have indicated they are willing to be reappointed. If reappointed, Mr. Choinski will need an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy. So at this time, I would make a motion to reappoint Kenny Long and Grayden Choinski to the Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board for two-year terms ending July 1st, 2019, including an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy for Mr. Choinski. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we now move to the Jury Commission. The Clerk of Court's office has requested an appointment for the Jury Commission. A letter concerning their request is attached. New applications on file have been received for the Jury Commission if the Board decides to appoint a new applicant from those on file. That seat is currently held by Ms. Phyllis Crump, and she has served on the Jury Commission since 2001. So that is 16 years that she has committed to that. She should be commended. At this time, I would make a motion to remove Phyllis Crump from the Jury Commission roster and thank her for her many years of service. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would make a motion to appoint Diane Berry to the Jury Commission for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2019. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to the Library Board of Trustees. Sue Fries is currently serving her second term as a Conapolis representative on the Library Board of Trustees with a term expiring June 30th, 2017. Per the Library Board of Trustees bylaws, she is not eligible for reappointment. Carol Schmidt is currently serving her first term as Chair and Concord Representative on the Board and has a term expiring June 30th, 2017. Ms. Schmidt would like to be reappointed to serve a second term. So I would make a motion that we remove Sue Fries from the Library Board of Trustees roster and thank her for her service. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would now make a motion to reappoint Carol Schmidt as the Concord Representative to the Library Board of Trustees for a term expiring June 30th, 2020. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would also move that we table the replacement of the Conapolis position to our July meeting after we have an opportunity to check some of the applicants. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to the Mental Health Advisory Board. Catherine Combs is currently serving on the Mental Health Advisory Board at the North Carolina DPS Adult Probation and Department of Juvenile Justice. Representative has submitted her resignation due to retirement. It is requested to remove her from the roster. An application has been received from Mitzi Quinn, who is eligible to fill the NCDPS seat for an unexpired term. An application has also been received from Dr. Roderick Lilly, who is eligible to fill the local psychologist vacancy on the Board. Dr. Lilly resides in Mecklenburg County. An exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy will be needed for him. Two at-large representatives, Gail Austin, Alston, and David Wall, need their responsibilities switched, and so it is requested to appoint Mr. Wall as the primary at-large, with Ms. Alston serving as the at-large secondary. And for those of you, you're all familiar with the Mental Health Advisory Board, but these positions are very attached to the areas that they served in the county. So at this time, I would make a motion that we remove Catherine Combs from the Mental Health Advisory Board roster and thank her for her service. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would make a motion to appoint Mitzi Quinn to the NCDPS Adult Probation and Department of Juvenile Justice seat on the Mental Health Advisory Board for an unexpired term ending June, excuse me, December 31st, 2019. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I move to appoint Dr. Roderick Lilly to the local psychologist seat on the Mental Health Advisory Board for a two-year term ending December 31st, 2019, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would further move to appoint David Wall to the Mental Health Advisory Board as presented on the attached roster, including exceptions to the residency and service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County. Dr. Tedra Clayder's term on the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County as the Member Cabarrus County Medical Society Representative expires June 30th, 2017. She is interested in serving another term. A letter of recommendation has been sent to you. Dr. Chad Weston's term on the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County as the Northeast Medical Staff Representative also expires June 30th, 2017. He has recently resigned from his position on the authority. An application has been received from Dr. Laura Pons to serve on the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County. She is a member of the CMC Northeast Medical Staff and is eligible to fill the position vacated by Dr. Weston. And we, I have a letter of recommendation for her as well. So I would move that we remove Dr. Chad Weston from the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County roster and thank him for his service. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. I move to appoint Dr. Laura Pons to the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County as the Northeast Medical Staff Representative for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2020. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I move to reappoint Dr. Tedra Clayder to the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County as the Member Cabarrus County Medical Society Representative for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2020. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to the Rowan Cabarrus Community College Board of Trustees. And it feels kinda strange speaking in the third person about myself, but Cynthia Minnet and Chairman Steve Morris currently serve on the Rowan Cabarrus Community College Board of Trustees and have terms ending June 30th, 2017. Letters of recommendation are attached concerning the appointments. Ms. Minnet has served on this board since 2005. An exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy will be needed for her. I would entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to appoint, or to reappoint the two individuals to the Rowan Cabarrus Community College, which would be Steve Morris and Cindy Minnet, for four-year terms ending June 30th, 2021, including an exception to the length of service provision for Cindy Minnet.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I will mention that when I was originally appointed to that board, I voted against that appointment, but it has been a very pleasurable experience, and I have enjoyed serving there over the past, I guess it's been four years now, it's hard to believe. Next, we move to Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County. Robert Ritchie's term on the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County ends June 30th, 2017. Mr. Ritchie would like to serve another term. A letter from WASAC Chairman Troy Barnhart is attached in this regard. Mr. Ritchie has served on this board since 2011. An exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy will be needed for him. So at this time, I would move to reappoint Robert Ritchie to the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2020, including an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And believe it or not, I think that's the end of our appointments tonight. You have in front of you a number of reports for informational purposes. Also, at this time, I would invite any of the board members to give us updates from various their liaison positions to municipalities or on various boards or committees. Does anybody have anything they would like to report tonight? Okay, are there any general comments by board members?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take a short point of personal privilege, please. And I hope I don't start crying today. Sorry. Today was a sad day in my family. We honored the life of my uncle, F. C. Vaughn Jr. He was 100 years old. He had a great life. As a 17-year-old, this man changed the course of my life. And that is to say it very mildly. And I had intended at 17 to become a doctor, and my uncle impressed upon me some other options, I'll put it that way. He was a huge influence for me and my brother. And he made a lot of sacrifices along with my aunts to make sure that, that we had a good future and a good life in Cabarrus County. And it was a great, it was great to celebrate 100 years. He taught me about fashion, which my family members will all find the humor in that statement. He was meant for the 80s. If you think of fashion in the 80s, that was perfect for him. And if you add in golf attire, you can understand what that kind of looked like. He taught me about golf and that it was an important thing to, for me to learn and to appreciate. And he taught me about business. He, he is the, he is responsible for me meeting my husband. And he is the person that my husband went to to ask if it would be okay if, if, if we got married. And he was a larger-than-life guy, who will be greatly missed. So I just want to take a moment to say, I know we did this earlier with Mayor Kits, who will be missed. My uncle was a business owner or businessperson in Cabarrus County for all those years, and very well-known and respected, and a very important community member during his life. And he will be greatly missed. And I appreciate the opportunity for a point of personal privilege to recognize him tonight.
Thank you. Our sympathy certainly goes out to you. Sounds like a wonderful man, and certainly to be, have that positive influence for 100 years is something we should all hope to achieve. Are there any other general comments by board members? If not, we do not have need of a closed session tonight. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We stand adjourned. Thank you.